We have a call to order from the Montegoal Regional Planning Commission. Our Tuesday, November 7th, a meeting. Roll call, please. Richard Black.
Here.
Greg Maloud.
Here.
Dan Sargent.
Here.
Dan Brown.
Here.
Alec Mosley. Katie Tragan. Greg Rollins. Now, three minutes. We need to approve the previous meeting minutes. You can have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes that submitted at the last meeting.
Do you have a second for that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are accepted. The staff and community reports.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may intercede.
Yes.
I have no -- the commission has no objection to changing the agenda.
Correct.
I would like to put Hydeaway first, as our attorney is on standby.
Okay.
Can we?
Got him there?
Just now.
So, in that request, we are going to address the Hydeaways first. We have the city attorney on the line, so that he can be present during this.
You should have -- two. Sam, you're on the speaker, and Mr. Cale, representing Hydeaway, is at the podium.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I can stay over here.
Yeah, so you should have before you a proposal to approve the Hydeaway subdivision. The only thing that we have not agreed to from your previous stipulations is to the non-public access to Ren's Nest Road. That is our primary entrance, was, has been our primary entrance, proposed since day one of this project a year ago. We've been dealing with this now for a year. The entrance on 41 was developed as a secondary entrance, following meetings with your planners, with concerns about traffic flow onto Ren's Nest. So, we did, and this was before any of us realized that there was actually a code in your fire code that requires having that second access point for subdivisions of this site. So, this property's been owned by the Harton family for over 100 years, well, probably for right out of 100 years when John Harton bought this property. There were five houses, as far as I can tell, out there on Ren's Nest. I-24 didn't exist, 41 come up, Mountain didn't exist, Ren's Nest Road existed. It split this property in half, just like it does today. It has been the primary legal address of this property since day one, and it's still that way. So, our contention is that we have a right, as property owners, as the property owner, to access Ren's Nest Road for this development. Ren's Nest Road meets the state standards for up to 1,500 cars a day, which, obviously, with 17 houses currently on Ren's Nest Road, we're not anywhere close to that capacity. We've submitted no less than, I think, three traffic studies to you guys in this process, all of which have stated very clearly that Ren's Nest Road would not be negatively impacted in a way that would justify denying access. We also know that the state of Tennessee has now come out with their roundabout plan that specifically addressed, in its presentation, this potential future problem with traffic at Ren's Nest and Main Street. That project, we have been in touch with T-Dot. I have verification that the plan still is in line to begin in 2026 with actual construction. It is fully funded already in the governor's budget and approved, so there's no question as to whether this is going to be done. They're in the drawing phase, wants to get the drawings done, then they let the bid, they hope to let the bid next year, and then begin construction in 2026, according to the email I have from the district manager at T-Dot. So, I guess I'm here to ask you to finally approve this subdivision. As it's presented, it's 100% R-1 compliant. This is an R-1 zoning. Zoning was given R-1 when zoning was placed by the City of Montegoal, when you guys were authorized to become a regional planning committee. All the lots meet R-1 requirements for minimum size and setbacks. All houses will be, will meet the requirements for the minimum size as stated in your subdivision requirements. Everything in this is 100% compliant with your zoning and your published regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Cale. Mr. Rush, Mr. Reese, any comments? Anything to add?
We don't have any new comments to add. From the motion that was made at the March meeting earlier this year with preliminary, there were two things, that being limiting the access to emergency only on Ren's Nest was one. The other was, there was some information that was requested to be put on the site plan regarding sewer conditions, and they did that. That's notes, I think, eight and nine on the updated plans. And then they did submit a slightly updated transportation impact study, but those were the only new things that were submitted. So, the question before you tonight that they're requesting is, you've already given approval, but it was with a condition, and so they're asking you, will you consider removing that condition from your previous preliminary plat approval?
Thank you, Reese. Commissioners, comments? Anything?
I don't have a problem removing it.
Okay. Legal?
Sam, do you have any comments on what you've heard?
No, no, I think Chad had to summarize things appropriately.
So, it'd be up to the commission, then, to decide on Ren's Nest Road entrance and/or exit?
Yeah, whether to remove the condition or not.
Okay.
All right. Richard, comments? Thinking for the vote?
So, what is being asked of us is to, we've already accepted, so unless we're going to change it, we have no action to.
Correct.
I don't think you're being accurate, Dick. If you look at the form, look at the form you sent us, that you signed off on, it didn't say the project has been approved. You didn't approve the project, you unilaterally made changes to our project, and then came back later and said that those are stipulations when we pressed you for this document that you're supposed to give us back in March, that you didn't give until September, October. We have never approved, we have never been in agreement with your contention on the Ren's Nest Road issue. You have not approved our subdivision plat at this point, our preliminary plat at this point. You have given us a list of conditions that have to be met before that plat, that preliminary subdivision plat can be approved, as way I read it and as way my attorney said. So, I don't think that this issue is correct, that you're saying, what you're saying is, you guys didn't approve our subdivision back then. You approved the subdivision that you wanted, you didn't approve the one we submitted.
Legal? Further comments on that?
Well, I mean, the bottom line is, is that when you approved the plat in March, you placed certain conditions on it, they disagreed, they filed a lawsuit, which was dismissed. And so, the issue now is, are you still willing to put those, needing to put those conditions on it, or not? And if you are, then you don't need to take any further action, because that's what's happened. If you are not willing to remove, or if you are willing to remove the conditions, then someone needs to make a motion to approve it with, as submitted, this second time.
Should the commissioners even vote on the possibility of reconsidering? Or is that the chairman's call?
No, I think if there's a motion to reconsider and do that, then you should all vote on
Commissioners, do you want to have a motion to vote on this, or not?
Go to what?
If we're going to take another vote to determine if we accept it and submit it, or if we decline it again.
I don't, I personally don't support them.
I'm still torn, and I'm concerned with the intersection, but maybe the new work that T-Dot is going to do would improve the way the traffic flows through there.
Mr. Sargent?
I think we should reconsider.
Mayor Maloud?
I'm not opposed to reconsidering, only based on the, my conversations with T-Dot, that the, what they're calling peanut dog bone oval-shaped type of traffic control is, will slow traffic in all areas, and that was their intent. Same thing with the roundabout that could be a little bit down the road by Waffle House. So, because they have to tie it into the new ramps coming off of exit 134, so subject to that work, and I'm not sure if I understand the same time line that Mr. Cale has proposed, but I don't mind seconding the motion, if there is a motion for the sake of further discussion, because I think we need to resolve this one way or the other.
Agree with that statement. All right, I need a motion that we readdress and vote again. Do I have that from one of the commissioners?
I will make such a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You second.
I'll second for the sake of discussion on the motion.
Mayor has seconded. All right. So, let's make it clear. Chad, I'm going to ask you, in your clear language, to define what this motion is doing to us, please.
So, you had previously approved the plat with conditions. One of those conditions has been met on the updated information that they've submitted.
Right.
The other is making the decision whether you want to keep it as emergency access only. And based on the information that they had submitted, from what the fire code says, it didn't necessarily say it had to be for vehicular traffic, it just says an approved fire apparatus access road, is what the language says and what they submitted to us. But that's what's up for consideration, so if you are removing that contingency on what it was approved before, that motion would be to just approve the preliminary plat and remove the contentious and allow full access on Ren's Nest. Otherwise, like your attorney said, you'd be doing with no motion at all, since that previous motion was still standing.
Are we all clear with that?
Not really.
Okay.
What are we voting on?
We're voting to accept the plan that they have submitted to us without our conditions of requiring the Ren's Nest Road to be emergency vehicle traffic on it. Is that a pretty clear statement? Okay. We're being asked to rescind our previous vote. I mean, it's changed, it's just we're going to vote again. I think it's important that we have comments from our public also before we move on this vote.
Was that what the motion was? I thought the motion was to reconsider. I didn't know the motion was to, I just heard it and seconded it.
Yeah, yeah, I think the motion is to whether or not you're even going to have further discussion on it and reconsider. So, you should, it's not that you are, that you have reconsidered and you've approved it, it's just that you're willing to have further discussion on it.
Thank you, Sam, that makes sense.
That's why I second it.
Yeah, so it could be a motion to discuss the reconsider or not. Now, public comments? Yes, ma'am?
So, you're reconsidering allowing Ren's Nest to be primary entrance? What are, what are y'all voting on? Because for the last five months, you're either in or out, each month it's different. So, now what?
We are voting on reconsidering. We're not voting in or out, we're voting to reconsider.
You're reconsidering whether Ren's Nest could be the primary?
Whether we're going to require them to follow ours' request of making the Ren's Nest access emergency vehicular access or not, letting you vote on the plan that they've submitted now that does not show that. And you agree with that statement?
I agree that you're trying to have this discussion. I still don't agree that you have approved anything, and if we submitted, we have submitted to you consideration tonight, versus, well, you said it last month, if we alter the plan that we submitted. Was it altered, materially altered?
You did.
Yes, it was. We materially altered it. So, we have a materially altered plan on the table for approval. We would like an up or down vote on what we have put on the table.
Thanks, I'm aware, the council tells me we're going to vote on if we are going to have that up or down first.
That's fine.
And then, that was the, that was the question, or the motion, if someone else will ahead and make a motion to approve or disapprove it as submitted, then y'all should go ahead and do that.
Right.
As I recall, the March, maybe I'm wrong, you can correct me in a minute, but it was a majority, wasn't just a majority, it was unanimous vote to approve what we agreed to in the March meeting.
Right.
Also, I'll point out that your stated reasoning behind your maneuver was because of Ren's Nest Road and the congestion that you can, that you, that you pretended denying the act, the whole traffic study thing that we spent a tremendous amount of money on to produce, not once, but three times. That your contention was, the reasoning, your stated reason for denying us access for Ren's Nest Road was because of perceived congestion on Ren's Nest Road, specifically Ren's Nest at Main Street. Now, since you made that determination, state's come along and said, we're going to alleviate that problem, we're taking that problem away, this project is going to happen, it's been funded. Your reasoning for denying us our plat has been negated. It's become moot by the state's action. So, it's another reason we're here. We didn't dismiss, we voluntarily withdrew the lawsuit, okay?
Well, let me, let me correct you on that.
And we can, and we're willing to resubmit it.
Hold on.
Let me correct you on that. Your lawsuit is vaguely effective. You may have withdrawn it, talked, you called your own motion and everything, but it was not from a surprise.
It was defective, because there was one signature missing, by the way, so.
Whatever it was, it was.
But it can be refilled, and it will be refilled. I'm not your choice.
Okay.
What comment? What was the vote, Judge, that was?
At the March meeting?
You have, you have two options. You have, you have a motion and a second to reconsider, in other words, to take it back up and to talk it out, or you can withdraw that motion and just have a motion to approve it, or not approve it one way or another, and the issue as I perceived, and Chad can correct me if I'm wrong, but the issue as I perceived is whether or not this, this roundabout makes a difference.
Thank you. Public comment?
So, you're voting to reconsider what? And I'm a little disturbed that the three most vocal commissioners.
I understand your concern.
Are not here.
We have, barely have a quorum tonight.
Yeah, I know, and so, if you vote to reconsider, then what happens?
We have a motion on the table currently to vote about reconsidering this issue, nothing more. I think while we have that, we need to go ahead and address.
You're basically reconsidering your motion with contingencies.
Correct.
And then determining whether or not you want to reconsider that, and you make an official vote to approve as presented, or to approve what conditions you had before. And that's up to you all, what you want to do.
So, having said that, commissioners, you ready?
If this motion passes, we'll need another motion to reconsider, or to start a discussion.
We need another motion to vote it up or down. And I do agree, Mr. Cale, there ought to be a vote one way or another to vote it up or down.
And Mr. Sargent, who made the motion, seconded by the mayor, he can always amend his motion too, if that's, unless you want to vote to reconsider and then vote to go one way or the other.
I'd like to go ahead and vote to reconsider, moving that, Chad. Yes, go ahead.
I actually got two questions. Will the T-Dot construction coincide at the same time that your constructions will take place, there about?
I have no idea. I mean, we have no idea how.
It didn't get approved tonight, would it?
I have no idea how long it's going to take us to finish the engineering work on this subdivision, to get it all priced. Your guys, your, as I understand the code, you guys have to come up with the bond amount. Who knows how long that's going to take to figure out how much we've got to put up in the bond, so we can go ahead and start selling lots. My guess, and then I have no idea how long it'll take to sell out the lots, I don't have any idea. Usually subdivisions take five to 10 years to sell out. I mean, this is not like you're going to create, tomorrow you're figuring this, and the next day, you're going to have an 80-plus lot subdivision on that piece of property, and there are going to be 80 homes under construction, and then a week later, all going to be built. You know?
Okay, so you have no idea on that, I get you.
Yeah, there's no way that I have.
Okay, my second question. This has been a year in the making, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Why are you so opposed to having just one exit on 41, and you are determined to have an exit on Ren's Nest? I mean, if you went through all this trouble, what is?
Well, okay, so, you know, one of the things about fire code, the reason they want that second entrance, as I understand it, is so that if one entrance is blocked for some reason, that the emergency vehicles can come in. Well, why is it that potentially 82 or 83, I forget, 82 property owners can be trapped by your, by this proposal? Why are you saying that they have to be trapped in their subdivision?
That they're not, that you have it?
If 41 is blocked, they're trapped. They're trapped, and you're saying that 17 property owners along Ren's Nest Road have rights that they don't have, by state statute. Nothing says they have that right, but you're denying the constitutional right. This group is the constitutional right in the Tennessee Constitution and the federal Constitution, to the right of a property owner to develop his property. It is in there, it is legally in there. He has a right to develop this property, period. It's, that's not debatable.
Thank you, Mr. Cale. I need a legal opinion, please. I am uncomfortable addressing this with a bare quorum of five commissioners. Do I have the ability to push this off a month if we vote to have reconsider and get these other commissioners here, and get the public here, and start this debate anew, and try to get this passed?
Let me direct the question to Chad. Chad, if we have that delay, does the 60 days expire?
Well, Sam, I don't know the answer to that, just because it's what they have now, it already has a standing approval, but an argument could be made that they have submitted a new set of plans, since they have been revised in accordance with what your original approval was, so I really don't honestly have a best answer to that. I'd say a judge can decide either way.
When was it, when was the set of plans submitted?
They, they were submitted while the lawsuit was still in place, and per your advice, we did not take it up until the lawsuit was dropped. When that happened, we only had the plans essentially with notification, put them on the agenda a couple weeks before last month's meeting, and so that's why they were delayed until this meeting.
I would be uncomfortable with you delaying this another 30 days, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, commissioners, we've heard this, we've got a motion on the table, let's take a vote on this. We are voting to reconsider. Correct? We're not voting to approve or disapprove, this is to reconsider. Mr. Black?
Against.
Mayor Maloud?
Yes.
Dan Sargent?
Yes.
Dan Brown?
Yes.
If, Rogo? Yes. So, we will, we will reconsider this and take another vote on this. Now, I know Sam's told me we shouldn't kick this can down the road, but I'm uncomfortable doing this with five commissioners. And a point was brought up, that the three that aren't here are the ones that were as vehemently against it as anybody.
That's not our fault, Chairman.
I understand. Do I have a motion to vote up or down, approve?
I'll make such a motion.
What do you need to clarify with your motion?
I'm making a second.
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
This is the Hydeaway?
Hydeaway, 83 block subdivision, having two entrances, one on 41 Highway, one on Ren's Nest Road, for full access for 82 homeowners.
Is it a motion to reconsider or is it a motion to approve?
To approve.
Up and down, approve.
And I, and so that also?
Mr. Cale, you have anything you want to add to this with vote?
What we're asking for is a down vote.
Public comments? You want to say it, say it now.
Is there a second to the motion?
There is. Did I hear a second?
No.
Dan? No? Do we have a second on this?
I'll second for discussion.
Why not?
Therefore, I have questions, if I may.
Go right ahead.
Okay. And Chad, I think you know some of the very brief background, but I met with Mr. Lester to relocate the Ren's Nest entrance and to assist in widening the road, as I recall the conversation, as Ren's Nest approached Highway 41. I believe, since I haven't heard from Mr. Lester, that it's off the table, is that still any consideration, or is the entrance going to be where your plan shows it?
Entrance is where we're planning to put it.
As submitted.
And as submitted. We're, that came off the table when you guys made the agreement in March, so.
Well, I met with him after March.
Well, it's off the table. That's a, we, in that proposal, one, you know, if you don't realize, state law says you can't demand us give you property in exchange for approval, so that's another problem.
Well, that didn't happen, that's not my point.
Basically, what you would have been saying, if we said that we had to help you widen the road, that we'd have to give you some land to do that, but the problem is that you're, what you proposed cost us a lot, was a more expensive proposition, and, and we just aren't willing to do that. We didn't want to do it to start with, but we were, at the point, at that point in the time, we were willing to try to work with the planning commission, but, but we, that went out the window.
Unfortunately, that's not my understanding, because my purpose in meeting with Mr. Lester and others at the time was to get the entrance and exit traffic away from the residential area of Ren's Nest, and we had discussion about that. If you're saying it's off the table, I was never told it was off the table, and I've known Mr. Lester for 30 years, so I don't know. But that was my understanding, trying to accommodate whatever future traffic issues there may be, whether it's at 41 or down Ren's Nest.
Mr. Mayor, but the plat as submitted, whatever it chose, since once before, y'all run now.
Correct.
Right, understood. I'm just explaining that there was discussion, I wanted to know if any of that was being considered for change, and I guess the answer is no.
Did you second? You seconded with discussion.
I second for discussion.
You had your discussion, so your second's solid. Commissioners, you ready to vote on this? It's been a long time coming. Mr. Black?
I do not vote for it.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Maloud?
Yes.
Chairman votes no. It does not pass.
You need, you need to state your reasons, by the way, on the record. All three of them that voted no have to state your reasons.
I'll go first, we've already voted on this, so I've heard no additional information.
Yeah, you voted no the whole way through, so we're familiar.
You're asking to speak, so if you'll allow me to speak. I've heard nothing.
I've heard nothing that changed my mind from my original vote.
Mr. Brown, you want to claim your vote?
Sure, I, I, I'm not convinced that, um, that, I'm not convinced that any changes that he's recommending now is, well, help the traffic. I think, I think it's still going to be a problem at the corner of Ren's Nest. I'm trying to think of the community and the safety of those that he wants to put in this subdivision, so I, I don't, I think it should be for emergency use, I don't know.
Chairman voted no because he felt like our initial proposal was reasonable and met the best needs of this community. Thank you, Mr. Cale.
Mr. Inkle?
Okay, moving right along here. Minimum square footage for residential structures?
Sir, so last month, you guys, we brought, presented, um, we were presenting that there were potential issues to whenever you guys want to put R2 and R3 minimum dwelling unit size from 600 feet to 800 feet, because we were concerned that it would impact apartments and condos. And I believe that last month, that, that motion was just withdrawn, that motion was withdrawn, so that way it wouldn't go to the Board of Mayor, Alderman to change. And you, you guys asked in terms of getting more data, in terms of what the unit sizes, average, the minimum, the maximum, medium mode of, of unit sizes in all residential use R. So if you look on page, we did it for each residential district. We have a R1, R2, and R3, and it has different numbers. The main thing that I want to point toward is, if you look at R3, the average size for, and we looked at a 10-building unit apartment, was 420 square feet per dwelling unit size, you know, for that apartment. I don't know if that's the exact one, you may have, you know, the apartments may be, some may be bigger than others, but that was the average for each unit size. And then you had see, um, the minimum for the R3 was 384 square feet minimum size. Of course, that doesn't include any upper floors, because we don't have that information. We took this information from GIS information that we had available to us and tried to give you something that you can look and see. One thing that Chad and I talked about is perhaps maybe changing the way that if you want to increase that, you know, size from 600 to 800, to do that limited only for your single-family homes, and then looking at making another unit size for apartments and condos now.
That's kind of where we hung up last time.
Yes, sir.
We initially were trying to go from 600 to 800 square foot, but we failed to include the other units such as condos, mobile homes, apartments on single families.
So what do we need to do to remedy that?
I mean, we can look at perhaps creating another ordinance or changing-
Right, so, so you had previously made that motion, it did not make it to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, we came back to readdress it, which everyone asked to do. And as promised, we provided some information to you, so we're not just pulling numbers out of the air. And there was some concern, and we talked about affordability in the community and the ability to have smaller home sizes as well, which not necessarily affordable homes, but just have smaller-sized homes. And so rather than just grasping at a number and pulling it out and arbitrarily upping it to a number, you had asked us to come back with some square footage requirements, so that's what we've done and information Jonathan just presented to you. So the determination is now, is that a number you still want to go with for single-family homes? And the reason we didn't move forward with it the last time is because I don't think it was taken into account when we discussed it, that it did include the apartments as well. I don't know that was the intention of this board to, of the requirement for apartments and condos.
So can we take 800 apply to single-family homes and then choose, say, 600, another number the commissioners want to come up with and apply to everything else?
If, if that's what you choose to do, I just feel like it's better now that you have some information in front of you to make a better decision on what, what's best for the town. Now, setting those numbers, that's totally something this board has the power to do if we go before the Board of Mayor and Alderman to, to either concur with you or make adjustments to that as well. There is no set minimum or maximum by state law, as long as it meets building code, so this is one of those decisions, you have to determine what's best for your community. Like I said, we've given you the averages, so you can have an idea of what's already here.
So our average in R1 is approximately 1,500, R2 is approximately 1,400, and we're down at average about 420 per unit in an apartment complex, or R3.
I guess the number we probably should have run for you is how many structures are actually under the 800. So I'm looking at, I'm just pulling up this Excel sheet, we ran all this from, in R3, you have 10 that are below 800 square feet of the residential structures. In R2, it looks like you have five that are less than 800. And in R1?
Can I interrupt you a little bit, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Mayor, are y'all finished with me?
I believe we are, thank you, Sam. Anything there?
I thought when we left this last time, that y'all were going to write the language for us to send it to the-
Yes, Sam, thank you very much.
And we will do that, but we need to know what your numbers are, what you want your-
Not only 800 square feet, but what we voted on and rescinded before, but we were, I thought y'all were going to write the language where we could exclude apartments from being included in that.
And we will do that if you will provide us with a number of what you want that minimum to be.
You said the apartments are 400 now, so if they're 400 now, they're not even in compliance with the 600.
But that, is that what you had?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, existing, and like I said, like, when we got the numbers, of course, this is, you know, this is a rocket science in terms of, we were, we went to each apartment building and figured out what the unit size was. This is based on-
Are the apartments defined now as their size?
What's that?
Are the apartments defined now in the ordinance?
In the ordinance, there is no, there's nothing that talks about apartments. It says dwelling unit size.
So the apartments would, apartment in R3 would have to be a minimum of 600 square feet?
I can tell you that one second.
Is R3 600 square feet now, or is it 800?
It's 600.
It's 600.
Chad's looking, um-
I can't remember, I don't remember seeing that.
So if it's not defined in the ordinance now, why would we have to define it in the future?
Well, everything would fall under the single-family dwelling unit, because it's specified as a unit, so if it's a single-family home, it's a unit. If it's an apartment, it's a unit. And so everything fell under those current-
But I thought I heard you say that the apartments that y'all looked at were in the 400-foot range.
And that, those are just pre-existing. I mean, that, that's what's already here. So it's not that, you know, if they were to come submit a plan today, it wouldn't be approved for that square footage requirement, but it'd just be a grandfathered use.
So you're asking us what size we, if we wanted to just change what size we would want the apartments to be?
Correct.
It wouldn't be segregated for the single-family dwelling.
You can, you can make a separate one for your single-family, and then you can make a separate one for your apartments.
So could we make 800 for single-family homes and not make anything, or do we have to put them all under one? Does that unit language carry one into the other?
You can just say something like, for single-family dwelling units, it's a specified square footage, except apartments, and if there's anything else you want to define, and set the minimum for that requirement. So I would say, you know, for instance, a single-family dwelling unit shall be a minimum of 800 square feet, except in the case of apartments. Any other thing you wanted to add that, it should be a minimum of 600 square feet.
So right now, if someone came to you to build an apartment, it, it would fall under the 600 square feet. So we could say, just use those two numbers. A single-family dwelling, the minimum square foot of 800, and apartments would be 600.
If that's the number you should choose.
I like those numbers.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I, I just don't know if 600, I mean, everything else here is 400, I don't know that, I don't know that 600 is not going to be too high on an apartment. And you were going to build some apartments at one time, I mean, I don't know how big a 400 square foot, is that average for an apartment?
Well, I don't have the numbers with me, but I would assume that would be one bedroom, and, and just common sense, if you, if you'll figure, you know, living room area, bedroom, bathroom, kitchenette, and all that, uh, you might spend in a motel efficiency at 600 square feet.
Yes.
So 600 would be an average, you would think?
I would think, yeah. And, and maybe give some wiggle room if there's some one, one-bedroom unit, which there is a need for those, but there's not great numbers of those right now. But, you know, I can see where people would want a one-bedroom efficiency to survive. It might not be what they want, but it's all they can afford. If they don't have that, they're going to be homeless.
So if we set a, we set it at 400, are we hurting ourselves?
Well, I think, if you could do it by bedroom, if you could break it down to that, then that would give you, you know, one bedroom can be 400 square feet, otherwise above one bedroom would be 600, whatever you decide.
Now, I think our written intent was a single-family home is what we wanted to address at 800. And we've, we've been carried into the apartments, which I don't think we ought to dictate, I think that's market-driven, and I think it ought to be available at any size, any price. The only thing I want to address was a single-family home. Yes, go ahead.
And I would note, like, you know, to reference earlier, like, a lot of apartments also have studio apartments versus going to be much smaller, everything's all in one room, so you could be, you know, smallest 200, 300, depending on how the market thinks that, how, or how the developer decides to build a studio apartment.
Right, 20 by 20 space, 400 square feet is not much.
So are we saying 800 and 600?
Single homes be single-use homes at 800. Does that sound reasonable?
That's for our-
And then we, we draw a line and cut it off and let the market determine on the rest of it?
Follow me.
Well, we overturn that though, let's, so what we'll have to do is, we, we'll have to present something for the next meetings that we can vote on, to have a vote on for single-family.
And I'd like some information from developers and citizens.
Public comment? Any public comment? Go ahead, Dave.
Well, I look at that as, as a business, and, and it's classified with property tax, and whoever owns it is, is going to pay, just like a, a business, whether it's corporate or individual on the taxing. But the, it's like you're getting into, are you going to tell the next business that comes in that's something else, that they have to have a minimum square feet? Or a maximum, for that matter?
That's uncomfortable.
Uh, you know, it's, it's, it appears to me that you're trying to regulate, 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 and, and the next thing will be, you know, a hamburger joint, or, you know, whatever it is, it's going to be, you know, it's kind of like a restaurant, you're going to regulate them and then have the food, food trucks, and, I mean, there's all sorts of, you know, catastrophic things.
Were you just making your recommendation, or do you have the council?
It's all knee-jerk to the tiny homes, you know that, so we're concerned, and we thought 800 square feet would be a baseline if we could keep the community.
But you've got a hotel here in town that's ringing out to weekly and monthly people. And, and, and that's been going on, continue to go on. If it doesn't, those people will be homeless.
Right, and I don't want, I do not want to impact that level. I want to keep it a single-family home. Any further comments? Any motions, or do you want to put it off to next month?
I thought we need to look at the ordinance, I believe.
Agreed? Agreed? I keep. You want to get some input from the developers yourself?
Yeah, another thing, I think we should put it up for-
We can kick it down again, we can do that again.
Any old business we need to bring back up that's not on the agenda that are, we'll move on to new business, the Bose Center rezoning. Anybody representing the Bose here? Please step up, introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name is Trevor Cross, I represent Dubose Partners, we're the ownership group of property.
Okay, my time here, thank you.
Thank you. We're excited to be here. Happy to answer any questions about this proposed rezoning that you might have.
Okay, Mr. Lee. So this is a rezoning from, currently the property is institutional, and they are asking for rezoning to C2 because of the uses they're planning to put on. If you look at the application, they're looking to, uh, boutique hotel with restaurants, bars, spa, spa, then space. They'll renovate the existing historic buildings and also construct new buildings for spa, wellness, pool, etc. And the reason that they would have to rezone is because they are not an institution, so they cannot do this unless they get rezoned to a commercial zoning district. And, uh, we found anything in terms of not recommending this, we believe it'd be a good rezoning.
Any comments, input? Public comments or input?
What exactly is this going to be?
Uh, it will be a boutique hotel with restaurants and other facilities.
You did make comment that you were going to keep some of the existing structure?
Um, yeah, all, anything that's historic stays. So that includes Clay Warren Hall, which is the main building there in the front, and all the buildings attached to it, including the cottages, it's up on 41. All that stays, we will renovate all of that extensively. There are some cabins that they use for the camps in the back that are in disrepair that will probably have to come out.
Do you have any kind of timeline on this?
Um, construction, we would hope to begin late spring or the summer of next year. We're already in schematic design phase, architecturally and on land planning. I can share with you a little bit if you'd like to stay at-
Please do. You're the first bunch here, we want to know what's going on.
Yeah, so this is, 41 is here, we're in city halls right here. Does that make sense? The, the building faces this way. And so these are the buildings that exist currently. We would add a kind of wellness spa building here, there's a pavilion there now that you may be familiar with. That would be a new pool, sort of in the same location as the current pool. These are, we're calling them cabins, but they're either one or two bedroom hotel rooms, basically. This is another kind of plunge pool. We'll have a trail system. This is a wetland back in here in the woods, so we've got some cool wooded ones with a trail and four lofts. We'll burn this and plant this heavily to kind of give us the privacy. The trail continues through here, we've got fire pit, and we've got a little fitness area, yoga studio kind of thing, and then some racket sports here, and then back, back to the-
Just for a point of information, what's the size of the cottages?
You know, I just know the answer to that.
I mean, is it a 600 or an 800?
These are hotel, this is hotel problems, so it will be, it's, it's just like you would, you know, so we're-
Do we reach that in time?
One of the neat things is that we'll have, if you want to book a room here, you'll have the ability to kind of have this historic feel, if that's what you want. Uh, in the, in the main building, the, the building on the back, we call the Holiday Inn, it's that flat roofed structure, that was built in the 70s. That'll have more of a kind of a modern, clean feel, and then you could have this kind of wooded country experience here, especially if you have, some of these have two bedrooms and a little loft, so if you've got two families with kids, they could be there for the weekend or a long weekend in the summer, that's kind of what we envision there.
Well, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but one of my earlier comments, I'm interested in what developers are thinking and planning, and seeing how that fits into the town, and that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, understood, understood. And I can, I have that in my computer, but I can-
The whole structure then is the main building, Clay Warren. And you're going to retain that in reference to its historical context, right?
Correct.
Are you going to seek some kind of a historical register for this building?
It is on the historic.
It's on.
All, so everything in here, including that, and anything attached, all this is on the National Historic Register.
I've been here since 64, so I, I'm well familiar with that. I watched the other building be built, and I've worked on it myself, but- other building be built, and I've worked on it myself. But the fact of the matter is, uh, the register of the, uh, historic site, I think, is the most important to us as a community to retain that. It's been here for well over a hundred years.
Yeah, we have no plans to demolish any, uh, we have a stairwell over here that's probably gonna have to be replaced.
Major place, yeah.
Major water damage, but aesthetically, you won't be able to tell.
Looks very nice. Thank you.
I have a question. Uh, isn't there a big room that you can have weddings and?
Yeah, we, we would have weddings, absolutely. Corporate meetings, retreats, that kind of stuff, absolutely.
There's so few places here where there's a big hall for a big, big wedding. So you're playing now?
Yeah, the old chapel, uh, which is attached to the library, it was built in the seventies, I believe, too. Isn't it appropriate for that?
What about the house that's on?
It will stay.
Good debate.
Is there any immediate plans for the property across north of, of Highway forty-one? I call it Tracy Highway. You've got about forty acres or so over there.
No plan at the moment. That's just, yeah, as you know, just wooded.
So it'll be a phased?
Uh, you know, we, well, I don't know at this point. We're, the deal kind of stands on its own with the hospitality piece, and so, we're gonna get that built and up and running, and then turn, turn to the north. I, I really couldn't tell you right now what we're gonna do with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion on this?
I move that the zoning for Dubose now institutional development be changed to Zone C two.
Second.
I second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. If that zoning pass, it will be presented with the council. Sunset Rock, Sunset Bluff, and North Point Road right-of-way abandonment. Mr. Perry, welcome.
Thank you, sir. We're not seeking entrance onto any heavily-traveled road. In fact, we're stocking that from afternoon. Um, as you all know from the last time I appeared here, we are, have acquired all the property out Sunset Rock Road, and, uh, we would like to have that road abandoned, and our intent would be to put a gate, uh, near North Central. And primarily, our, our goal here is for protection as we're drawing, as we've expanded the campus, we're drawing and encouraging children and people to be out walking to the woods, in the woods, on the trail, and we would like to restrict traffic back there, um, for their protection and their activities planned, uh, for young children, and we feel that, and it would benefit their safety, uh, to have restricted access. I know a lot of the townsfolk like, uh, to go out into Warren's Point and take a look. It's a nice overlook. There's a lot of nice overlooks here, but we would recommend that, um, access to all of that property come through our main gate. And once again, that's a safety issue. We know that, uh, while Mont Eagle, you're broadcasting this, I'm not gonna tell you that my house is almost never locked. But, um, you know, things are changing, and there's a lot more traffic coming through town, and we just feel that it's beneficial primarily for the children and for pedestrian safety out there.
So Scott, you say y'all bought all of the property back there?
Yes, sir.
There's nobody landlocked?
No.
No other, whether it's a home there or not, there's nobody landlocked getting access to, to acreage?
Well, there are structures back there owned by the, all owned by the Assembly, and if anybody were to live there, we would provide them access through that gate. It's probably gonna be an electronic gate.
So there are other structures that, on this road?
There's currently four houses out there, um, two of which, uh, we're gonna return to nature. And, um, the other two will be guest-type houses for, uh, our summer program, but not residential.
I ask a question again. Are there any third parties that own any property?
No third parties whatsoever. All Assembly own the property.
Assembly, Mont Eagle Sunday School Assembly, or people that live in the Assembly's property?
Mont Eagle Sunday School Assembly owns every structure and every piece of land out Sunset Rock Road.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
One, one of the issues I think we discussed with utility.
Right.
Um, the fact that those utilities only service Assembly property now.
Correct.
Comments around, do we need to address utilities, if we could give them the right to abandon them, or what?
Well, that's the discussion I've been having, excuse me, Mayor Malu, on that, whether or not, um, you can abandon any utilities. Because my concern was if you put grant money into it, because a lot of times, once you put grant money into it, they don't let you turn things back over and make it private. But we don't know if anything has, has occurred in any recent years to have said grant money was involved. The question would be, uh, for the lines that are there now, if the city is to abandon those and make them private, there would have to be new meters set down at the public right-of-way for any utilities that are out there. And so, I'll, I'll turn that back over to Mayor Malu, if you'd like to address it.
Are lines, and are private lines now, or are they not?
Inside the, um, the central campus are private lines, and, and there's a master meter there. I mean, we, we would appreciate, uh, and, and knowing that the town would retain an easement to service those, uh, just keeping the water out there serviced by Mont Eagle. Uh, if we were to add anything that required water, we would pay a tap fee. Uh, we have absolutely no plans for development of that property that would require, uh, more water than is already being supplied out, out the end of that road.
And to address Chad's point, the existing structures have water meters there now?
That's correct.
And water service?
That's correct. I paid, uh, what was it, two hundred dollars per meter to have it put in our name.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a city decision, but if the city's gonna maintain the responsibility and the ownership of them, the deed's gonna have to record. The abandonment deed is gonna have to record that at some point.
That's correct. It would have to show an easement of whatever the specified width is, depending on what utilities are there in order to provide access to the town to go on to the, the private road and to make those repairs.
We have no objection to that.
And to perform work.
That's correct.
And everything else. So I don't know if there's an e, existing easement now, but it would, I mean, I guess that's something we're gonna look at as far as the deed.
And there's not that we're aware of, and if you look at tax maps, there's Sunset Rock Road only goes by tax map a portion of the way into the property. It could overwhelm a majority, and well, I don't know if you can see it as easy on this map that's in your packet, but we couldn't find a specified right-of-way width. So we know it's public, but none of the deeds specify that it's thirty feet wide, twenty-five feet wide, so it's kind of unknown right-of-way back through there. So there's nothing that adequately defines it to say we're converting this over into a utility easement. So that would have to be specified in the deed if the town could determine what width is needed for both access and to contain the utility line itself.
Shouldn't that be resolved before we vote to abandon the road?
Yes.
And that's why we looked at section seven, and we put utility requirements. I know we've seen, you know how I answered that, so we're gonna get some, uh, resolution before, you know, we guys vote on it.
So go out here that we need to have some type of utility easement designated before we abandon this road?
Correct. Then your utility department will have to help determine what, what that should be, because they're the only ones who are gonna know where the lines are, what is actually there, and then specify what width is needed. Because, you know, if your utility line is so many feet off the roadway, then you're probably gonna need access to the roadway and a portion off the roadway of the utility line. And that size, we won't know without, here through the utility department.
So if.
One second. Go ahead.
There's a fire hydrant out there that we just rebuilt on Sunset that's kind of by the road to access for, for firewater on that end. That's the only, the last tire on that line going down. So that's a very, uh, critical factor for us on the fire side.
Got you.
I mean, it is blowed, it has been certified, so.
Go ahead, Scott.
Well, so, um, since we are a level-one utility district, if you were just to, if you, well, if you have the ability to abandon the lines and put in another master meter out there, and you just send us one water bill a month, I mean, we're certainly amenable to that. We're paying for all the water used along the road, so.
Which we're maybe we're maintaining?
Yes.
Is it just water?
Just water.
So that's what I was gonna ask. There is no natural gas out there, and there's no sewer out there?
No.
Electric comes up from forty-one.
Two dwellings. Two dwellings. And, um, I'm not sure where the water for the, uh, facility superintendent house, if it comes off North Central or if it comes off Sunset Rock. I tend to think it comes off North Central.
It's up to it, yeah.
Is that the staff house right there?
Yes.
Further comments, discussion? Public input? Go ahead.
Is this totally different than, than when we were talking about the West College Street abandonment?
I don't know. I didn't, we didn't have a problem with West College Street ban. We thought it was a good idea. I, that's in your court right now, is it not?
Well, the, the, the realtor did not come back after the discussion, because he said he felt like that there wasn't any positive reaction from the city. He was looking at it from, uh, creating two commercial lots down there for the city's benefit as far as tax revenues and stuff, and, and, and it just kinda, uh, wasn't much interest in, in, in looking at that.
Sorry, I got that message from us. I was positive on that. I thought that was a good thing for the city, and I think most of the commissioners did, too.
I thought I was waiting on the.
But they've been on the city council side.
Yeah.
From what I remember of that meeting, they were open to the abandonment of College Street. They were gonna have to maintain utility easement. That part was unknown, but what they had.
Same thing here.
Right. But what they had left it as is they had not received any type of official documentation from all the owners involved requesting the abandonment of College Street. Like, in this case, we have an official letter requesting that abandonment.
So what you're saying is if the affected three property owners there, if this is the totality of that.
That's correct.
Would, would sign a letter asking for consideration of that, that we would be in the same situation as the Sunday School Center.
Yes.
As opposed to that.
And I had already contacted T-Dot, reported on that at the last meeting, um, that T-Dot was open to considering granting driveway permits to those, because I showed them what was presented to us of redoing the lots to provide, you know, additional frontage, and they seemed like they'd be open, because it was gonna affect their project somewhat of what they're doing for the roundabout, depending on when the subdivision of property might happen. But they said they would be open to considering that.
I'll report this back to the realtor and, and let him do whatever. And then the other consideration I would have is typically on, on, on water lines. So if you look at line density, customers per mile, or whatever, and, and the cost of maintaining that section of water line is greater, uh, than, than probably, uh, anywhere in town, uh, for, for two dwellings, it would be minimal bills, and, uh, I don't know what the distance is from Sunset or, from North Central to the end out there. Uh, is that the craft, where the craft?
Yeah, the weight cast and craft.
Yeah. So that would probably be pre-ordered line?
Probably.
Yeah. So you're maintaining, uh, and if it's fire hydrated on it, is that a six-inch line?
It is.
So we're maintaining a six-inch water line for two customers?
No, I, well, I'm not sure. It is my understanding, but I wanna investigate it further, that the six-inch stops at the hydrant and goes to a two-inch to provide the house.
Well, in any event, we're still maintaining.
Whatever it is.
A, a, a transmission line for two customers.
Exactly.
Is there a letter that needs to get?
We would, if.
For College Street?
If that's the pleasure, so we would, so we would commission, we would accept responsibility for this, for that line.
Did you hear that comment, that the, uh, Assembly would accept the responsibility for maintaining those lines at their expense?
Probably better for the city.
I think maybe better for everybody.
It is better for the city, yes. I agree.
Yes. Yes. Any further discussions? Thank you, Dean. Any input? Motion?
One, like, those lines terminate at the end of the property, or do they?
Correct. They, they terminate. They go to the end of Sunset Rock Road, take a left, um, up Sunset Bluff Road, and terminate out there at the very end of that.
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I refuse myself.
Right. Same here. We're not gonna vote, Dean. Members and living residents there, so we've got three votes to take. If we have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Have a second.
Motion to.
Approve abandonment of the right-of-way road, the road that's right of.
Which would include the city, what? The utilities?
They accept responsibility on maintaining utilities.
You have the motion?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Perry?
Thank you.
Any new business that we need to discuss or needs to come before us? Very well. Motion adjourned.
I'll make a motion for adjourn.
You were timely last time. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Dean's adjourned. Thank you.